Call City Council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Here.
Counselperson Echo Angeli?
Here.
Counselperson Bining?
She's excused.
Counselperson Germaine?
Here.
Counselperson Lamoore?
Here.
Counselperson Felder?
Here.
And Mayor Clark?
Here. I'd ask that we all please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the glorious wonders so visible around us. The beauty of the river and Lake Shore, the heritage of our floral city, and above all, the beauty of our people, the citizens of this city. Guide us in our deliberations and discussions this evening. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
Pledge allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, first item, please.
The opportunity to amend the agenda.
Any amendments to the agenda?
Your Honor, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda to regarding the revised to insert in the place of the resolution that's on the agenda, the revised resolution with the correct dates for the appointments. I believe a copy is on the desk, council's desk.
Yes, just for clerk creation, appreciate that motion. There was, the terms are correct, but the years in which the term would expire just had the wrong year. So it is, there was a four that were present on that. So thank you, councilman. Other amendments? There's a motion to make that amendment. Looking for a second. Second.
Support.
Okay, I think I got three now, so. So clerk, you would like a roll call on that?
Yeah, so this support is from Brian Lamoore?
Yes. So there's a motion by Council Mike Lanes, supported by Councilwoman Lamoore, to amend the agenda to include the revised resolution for, on the appointments list. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Counselperson Echo Angeli?
Yes.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Counselperson Lamoore?
Yes.
Counselperson Felder?
Yes.
And Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is a presentation, I'm sorry, citizens' comments not related to an agenda item. And I do have a letter from a citizen to read into the record.
Okay, we'll start with the, the letter on citizens' comments, if you would, please.
The letter is addressed to Mayor Clark and City Council. And this is from the Chairman, Michael Bassanik, of the Monroe Zoning Boards of Appeal. Dear Honorable Mayor and City Council, on behalf of myself and with concurrence of the Zoning Board of Appeals, we would like to personally thank you and council for amending Section 720-187 of the Monroe Zoning Court Code. Needless to say, we have struggled to get a compliant of the board to our hearings, and in many cases, to get six members for a quorum to conduct business. With the new member makeup of the board, I am confident that we will represent you and the council in a more effective and meaningful way to serve the general public. Many thanks for your foresight in making changes needed to better serve the citizens of our great city. Respectfully submitted, Michael Bassanik.
Thank you. And that's in response, of course, to the court, the council's action of, of looking at the size of the zoning planning, zoning board of appeals, and the makeup of that to make sure that we have full boards and full quorums. Other comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item? Any comments from those present not related to an agenda item? And of course, as, as we go forward, there's also time at the end of the meeting to make comments from those that are here from the public. And if there's, it's related to an agenda item, just as the council may have the opportunity to pull an item from the agenda for further discussion, those present can also ask to have an item pulled for further discussion if it's currently on the agenda. With that, next item, please.
The next item is a presentation by the city manager regarding the fire station.
Thank you, Mr. Pastu.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Lewis is going to be pulling up a couple of drawings related to the project, but I thought it was important to give the council an update where we are with the project itself. We've been getting some critical dates here. The first item we have up there is just a revised site plan. On the upper part of the screen, going north is Second Street. Down below is Third Street. The one thing that I think we resolved through our Fire Steering Committee, working with our architect and our construction manager with this, is that we would look to locate the building site on the western edge of the property. We think it provides better turn movement for vehicles coming out on, onto Third Street for the apparatus, probably minimizing the amount of disruption with the neighbors. And then more importantly, and Patrick will run the area, the arrow up to the northeast is that we think in the future, when there is an addition to the, with the police station attached to it, and if you look to the south, there's where the parking lot is that came with the Lincoln School property, we think that that alignment will serve the community most cost-effective well into the future. So we've kind of set ourselves on that site plan to go forward. Any thoughts, questions, before we go to the next one?
No.
If we're going to look for expansion later on with the city police, are we doing a rough drawing of that now?
Much of our dialogue has been talking conceptually how that attachment would be, you know, with the addition and some of the, and even prior to this project really getting underway, our architect, Redstone Architects, had done some very preliminary programming for what a police station would look like. And so we've even looked internally with the floor plan, how we could conceptually, when that happens, merge some of those rooms or, in essence, take some non-load-bearing walls and rooms and reconfigure it as part of that project. So we are thinking long-term with how that would function going forward.
Questions at this point? Not, please continue.
Next one is, we've got just kind of a review of the elevation, and then there's some computer rendering, so let's go with the, just the elevation. We'll start with that. The top one there is looking from Second Street, so it would be the north elevation. Am I right there, Patrick?
Well, these, these are flipped 180 degrees.
Yes, they are, that's right, that's right.
Conceptualize this in reverse on both fronts.
Yeah, and part of the interesting is, we started with the project primarily on the east side of the property, and then came to the conclusion it would probably be better to move it there. So everything is kind of reversed as far as the elevation. I think the significant feature that you want to look at is the type of doors that we have. When you look at that, the top one, it would be the, the north elevation, and you're going to have your kind of typical doors that'll have, like almost a garage door, if you will, retracting in that manner. And then if you look below, that would be on to Second Street. And one of the things that, and we're talking a little bit about this as well, is more of a retractable door that they go interior-wise rather than up. And part of it is, is from an operational standpoint, the benefit of it is, is that other fire departments in the past, sometimes in their haste to get out, will hit the door before it's fully retracted. And this has been, in many ways, it happens quicker, and they can proceed out there much quicker as well. But you can see, that's pretty much kind of the fundamental design that we're, we're looking at for the, the building itself. And then there's a rendering, more of a color rendering that would go along with that. And again, that's what, the, the top one now represents the south elevation looking, and again, these will get turned around a little bit, but, and then the, the north piece of it would be on the second component of it. So just to kind of give you a sense of how this is progressing. And then the last piece is just the last part of this, before I get into talking a little bit about the project numbers and where we go from here, is the floor plan itself. And again, you'll see that to your right, and again, this is going to get flipped, but the primary, the bay areas, there's three of them. We have, I mean, working again with our architect and project manager, been skinning it up a little bit to save on cost and, and some of the programming. When you go along to the front there, you'll see that to the far left, and I'm not sure if we can blow it up at all.
Sure we can.
There you go. Some of the program area, a couple of things there, you'll see the community room, which was a significant part of what we were talking about, where it'll serve also for training with fire, PSO staff, as well as serve as, for different community functions that we may be involved with, training for defibrillators, that type of thing. The other thing that's important to note is, and again, part of the cost measure is that vestibule area has gotten changed a little bit so that we've now incorporated a little bit more into the building itself. But again, when you look at some of those, building, office space there, we are looking at, in the future, how that can be incorporated when we actually look into a consolidating with the fire station. And then the other part, if you go up to the top, is the exercise room there. We're probably going to look at making the space area for the community room larger in that area, and still having some question about that programmed space. But, but it, it does lend itself to a future conversion as much as possible going forward, so. Any questions, thoughts before, I just wanted to kind of give you an update. Those were some of the issues that, that we were looking at before I get into the budget numbers, which drove some of these decisions as well. If not, an item four on the handout I gave you is, you know, just stating where we were, the project budget, $6 million. Takeoff on cost by our, our construction manager. Now we're at a little over $440,000 over where we need to be. It was at $1.2 million, and then through a series of reductions, working with all the parties and Fire Steering Committee, we were able to, to bring it down to that 440 number without really functionally impacting the operation or the aesthetic quality of the building or the site. The one thing it's important to note, this project has a very, very high contingency at 15%, which is three-quarters of a million dollars. And again, it's very high, and certainly really it lends us room to, to bring that, that number down as more details get resolved through the process. Item five is important for me to comment. I think we're comfortable where we're at with the project, knowing a number of things. The next phase of the project with the design development typically yields more cost reductions, the quantify, the quantities get better fine-tuned, the quality and the options, working again with our construction manager and their estimating, along with the, the architect. We also think that as we understand, we're taking some additional soaring, slowly borrowings, and one of the things, once we understand the site conditions a little bit better, we anticipate that some of that contingency cost will be coming down as well. We have other alternatives to consider as far as, I mentioned, the doors. There is a greater cost for the, the bifold doors, but at the same time, there's an operational issue. We're looking at heating systems. Right now, we've got a boiler that, system, which is really, in many ways, very desirable from a long-term cost and maintenance standpoint, but you could go cheaper with a, with a, you know, mechanical system for the heating there. And then there's some cornice work. There's a lot of little things here or there we could, could make some changes. And then we'll also probably look at potential for some design deducts as we proceed through it. The one thing I left out there is, if, if needed to be, we've got some funds and capital improvements that we could potentially program as a contingency if needed at $250,000. But I think the important thing is, from my standpoint, and based on our experience, that we're comfortable proceeding forward with the project. The other thing that's phenomenally important for the council to understand is that through a construction manager process, there is a requirement for city council action to accept, approve, or reject the guaranteed maximum price. So therefore, if it doesn't fit into the project pricing that you are comfortable with, you always have that discretion to not proceed forward. We're anticipating that this will probably come maybe late April, May. We will talk with OAK a little bit more, but I think in their case that, you know, we're getting a little bit closer with that. And again, the last bullet there is, this project doesn't go forward without your consent. But I'm certainly comfortable moving forward to the next phase of design with the, the project itself. I typically would do this in, in a work session, but given the fact that we were out at the port earlier tonight, I thought it was important to at least do it during the regular meeting because as the project moves forward, certainly keep the council apprised to where we're at with it. So be more than happy to entertain any questions, comments, thoughts that you might have.
Comments? Maybe next, I think there's next meeting date that we have scheduled?
With the Fire Steering Committee?
Yeah.
That one we haven't set up yet.
Okay.
I was wanting to do it this week. We'll see what we can set up. It may be even early next week, possibly, to try and fine tune some of those other costs. We've got a handful of line items that we can talk further about to drive home that, that dollar amount, so.
Of course, those will be posted through the clerk's office for those that have an interest as well, so, thank you. Any questions for city manager? Very good.
Patrick, thank you.
With that, next item, please.
Next item is a communication, number 1945. This communication from the Director of Community Development regarding the capital improvements budget fiscal year 2018 to 2019.
Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. You received correspondence from Community Development Director Jeff Green informing council that, at their January 8th meeting, the Citizens Planning Commission recommended approval of the 2018-19 capital improvements program, and also to let council know that we will be looking to set the public hearing and action for city council to consider at the meeting on February 4th. Thank you. So that, that was the intent of the communication, is just to let you know that that action came from the Citizens Planning Commission and that we will be holding a, a public hearing on the 4th and requesting action. February 5th, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we need a motion, Your Honor, to schedule a public hearing?
I think to accept the communication and the public hearing will be, will be on the next agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
We'll just use this administratively to set the, the public hearing based on the correspondence that was submitted.
A motion to accept the communication and let them proceed with the next step.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we accept the communication from the Director of Community Development.
Second. Motion by Council Mike Lanes, supported by Councilwoman Lamoore, to accept the communication. Clerk, are you looking for a vote on that as well? Yes, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Echo Angeli?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Passes.
Item, please.
The next item, under the council action, is number 1941, appointments.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that the resolution as revised for the appointments for 2018 be accepted, placed on file, and the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Council Mike Lanes, supported by Councilwoman Whitman regarding item 1941, the appointments. Any other comments? I'll just make a comment. I know that we have many appointments that come in January, and many of the other appointments come in June. There, there are still some that are pending that would be considered January appointments. I want the council to know that still working on some final items. I appreciate the, from the zoning board of appeals, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and the Citizens Planning Commission staff and department heads, as well as the, the board chairpersons in our conversation, allowed the opportunity to do some shifting of, of positions because we had shortfalls in one area. As we talked about the zoning board of appeals and that reduction, it made it allowable for people to shift to one person that had interest with the Brownfield. So still working on a process in the last January, and I'll be working on those and get those to council as soon as possible. The council positions, I've had a couple inquiries in that. The list has been provided to the council members. I've also got a couple of inquiries regarding the TMA COG assignment. There's a meeting at the end of the month with their general assembly. Thought I'd bring back some of those committees that are available at the TMA COG. Water Quality is one that was filled in the past. It might be something, I, I know that the REAs council members have an interest in that. There might be another one as well, but I thought we'd bring that back and then kind of put that back to council and let them review that list. There's some committees that we quite honestly haven't had for a while. That might be an opportunity and a time through a work session to discuss how we might bring those forward. We had an ad hoc committee on arts and culture that kind of started up and never transitioned, but maybe now's the time to look at that. So I'll be making some of those comments at a future work session as well. So I wanted to give an update on that, so I appreciate the motion and the second. Is there other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Echo Angeli?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is the consent agenda. And under consent agenda, item B is $1,033,835.23.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda wish to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, are there any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled from the agenda for further discussion? Any items wish to be pulled? Seeing none, a motion would be in order regarding the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that the consent agenda be accepted, the items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and their recommendations be carried out and resolutions approved.
Support.
Motion by Council Mike Lanes, supported by Councilwoman Whitman, that the items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Echo Angeli?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
Thank you. So it is January, and we start as the start of the year here in this term, that we start with the first precinct on January. So Councilwoman Whitman, any comments this evening?
Um, no, Your Honor.
Very good. Council Mike Lanes?
No, Your Honor, I'll pass.
Councilwoman Germaine?
Yes, I do. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the staff of City Hall and the department heads, Chief McCormick and Chief White, for the presentations that all of you have given us, newbies here, to give us a full summary of what the needs of the city are. We appreciate that, thank you.
Good. Councilwoman Lamoore?
Yes, Your Honor. Just wanted to thank the Port Commission for the great presentation they had for us this evening for our work session. It was very informative, and I thought, I, I really look forward to bringing back the information from them to the city council, as well as the Citizens Planning Commission. It's going to be a fun year for that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Felder?
I just thought it was wonderful, all the citizens that are volunteering to serve on these committees. I know that I am certainly looking forward to my assignments. It's, it's just so wonderful to be working with people who care so much about their community. That's all I have.
Very good. Just a couple of comments from me this evening. I'm going to start, I only made comments about the appointments. I just want to thank those that have had an interest. I know that one of the, this one that I see, Mr. Yowes here, from, is an appointment for the zoning board of appeals. Thanks for being here. And I know that we'll be sending correspondence to those else that have taken on the next task, which will be swearing in, as well as the schedules for when they'll be serving. The, this announcement of I am coming up, first off, this week with Martin Luther King was a, I won't call it a holiday because it's more about the person than all he stood for in his life. While, that's why I have our meeting here on Tuesday, but throughout the week, whether it's at the community college or at the county museum, there's many programs and opportunities to learn more and, and have dialogue. I would refer you to their websites for activities and opportunities to interact as we think about this week and think about how we're progressing, not only as our community, but as a country, and how we be, have respect and how we continue to move forward with each other and follow the words of Martin Luther King. Also, this Saturday is the 205th anniversary of the, at the River Rays National Battlefield Park of the, regarding the War of 1812. So it's, at least it's winter, and it is cold like it would have been, the snow will still be here. But the opportunity to go out there, I hope that you're there for the activities in the morning, stay for the ceremony at the national park. There's also speakers that are going throughout the week at the national park, and it's actually being held at the former Monroe Sports Complex. There's presenters that'll be speaking each day of the week, and then also on Saturday in the afternoon at the Monroe County Museum. So those are my announcements for this evening. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy in.
Say thank you for giving Michelle from my office the opportunity to, to sit in this evening. This is her first experience as clerking for the council meeting, and I appreciate your enthusiasm when I, when I made the suggestion that we give her the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome. Michelle, again, other comments?
Yep, just thank you for, for this opportunity.
I guess the follow-up to that, as you think about the staff and you think about our department heads and opportunities of mentoring and coming along, because there's that day that comes up where somebody, for whatever reason, maybe personal, might be otherwise, that they're unable to attend. So the opportunity to, to bring a staff along, and in this case, is a great example. So again, welcome, Michelle. Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
Your Honor, just the one comment, following up with Councilmember Germaine, I want to thank the new council members for attending the works and the orientations as well. It's a big time commitment. I, those, they, they went at a minimum two hours each and every one of them, and there were, I think, five of them that lasted in excess of that duration. But also the staff, again, for their preparation for that as well. So we, we greatly appreciate your commitment to go through that as well. That's all.
Next item, comments from those present here this evening. Any citizens' comments wish we made? Yes, sir. Just step the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Casper Monday. I live at 712 West Sixth Street, and I was, come across an article in Sunday's paper about security on the Riverwalk. That's going to cost approximately $300,000. Where are they supposed to get that money? Where are they proposed to get it?
That's a good question. We're, I don't know, Mr. Pastu, if you want to, or, because it's regarding Riverwalk in the downtown?
Yes.
And the lack of those things. So may, I know, Mr. Pastu, in working with the DDA and some items, that's where we're looking, but, Mr. Pastu, if you would.
Yeah, there's $300,000, if I'm.
Yeah, please do.
$300,000 allocated in the capital improvements program, and a lot of it's going to involve certainly with, while it says security, it also involves some lighting, other points of interest along there, but clearly the intent is to make it safer, more attractive for pedestrians to, to be there. But it is going to be funded by the Downtown Development Authority. They have a revenue stream, so it's not coming out of the general fund. It's as a result of revenues through a tax increment capture for the downtown, so. But we do incorporate that as part of our capital improvements program.
Okay, and something else, I mean, I can understand you having lighting. I think it's nice to have a Riverwalk, but, you know, why would you want to have lighting down through there? I mean, you know, you can't see anything at dark down through there. I mean, you know, it's nice for parents to take their children down there during the day, see the ducks, the geese, and stuff like that. But, you know, in the summertime, you know, it gets dark about 9:30 or 10 o'clock, and people at work, you know, they ain't going to, you know, go down at no 12 or 1 o'clock and walk up down there when they got to get up 5:00, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning. I mean, you know.
Let me just add, just a response to it. One of the things they're currently working on is the, an update of the downtown master plan, and it goes in conjunction with one of the things that, it's been recognized, even with past programs, is in many ways, the businesses are facing the wrong way. There really is a desire to, to have the, the, the river interact more with the downtown businesses, and that certainly, some of the appropriation. certainly, some of the appropriation, uh, that they're contemplating, uh, with the project is in that light, uh, to start integrating, uh, the riverfront more with the functionality of the businesses and buildings there along the river, uh, and, you know, we're hopeful that, uh, 'cause in most communities, that is kind of where the focal point of, uh, a lot of pedestrian activity is, is there along the river with the businesses accessing it, so, there's more to come with that, and certainly with the, from the project standpoint, a lot more details would be coming forth before they would move forward.
I understand that, but, uh, you know, lighting is, I don't think lighting's gonna stop anyone from doing anything, you know, I'm not being belligerent or anything, but if they're walking in a bank during daylight hours and rob a bank, I mean...
I think it's just, uh, if I may, again, to the mayor, just, uh, it's creating a more comfortable environment for pedestrians, uh, and again, integrating that area along with the businesses, uh, along the riverfront, uh...
I mean, like I say, I'm not gonna be down and walking at no 12, 1 or 2 o'clock in the morning on no Riverwalk, you know? Of course, I'm retired, uh, I worked 46 years, proud to say, you know, but I'm still not gonna be down and walking at that time of night. Well, thank you for your time, and God bless you, and...
Thank you.
Well, thanks for being here.
Thanks for coming.
The one here goes to church, you're welcome to come to Monroe Full Gospel anytime.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments from the public? Seeing none, uh, motion be in order regarding our, our, um, next session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we go into closed sessions for the purpose of attorney update and land acquisition.
Second.
Motion by Councilman, Echo Linsch, supported by Councilman, uh, Lamore, uh, to go and close the executive session, uh, for items stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Echo Angelie?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.